All right, and welcome to the show, Mr. Stanky. Thank you so much for joining us here today.
Okay, well, thank you for inviting me for this.
All right, so you've only been in the hot seat of the mayor for about a month, but we wanted to touch base with you and just to get to know you a little bit. So who are you? And why did you decide to run for mayor?
Well, I've been living in Clinton since 1982. I moved up here from the lower mainland, became the manager of the government liquor store here, and retired in about 98. I've been on council before, in 2002 to 2011. Those were the times where there were three-year terms. I was a three-year term-elected mayor. I sat on the TNRD board for nine years. I was on the film commission for nine years. chaired for about seven of the nine years. I was a small community representative on the UBCM board for two years. And then in 2011, I decided to step back a bit and let a new council take our initiative and see where it goes. And then I watched, sat back and watched and watched. And I thought, you know, I think now's the right time to jump back in. There's a lot of things going on. We've gone through a lot of hard times. And judging by the world economics, we're going to be going through some more hard times. But I figured they, a good mix of council that we have would be good under a different kind of leadership than what they were used to for the last four or five years.
Generally, people start running because they see opportunities for change. What specifically were you looking or are you hoping to bring to the village of Clinton?
Well, every community is always going through change. For any one person to run for office with a one-item agenda, I think is a lost cause. I think it's a team effort. Your one voice at a table of five. But I was going through the Community Economic Development Plan. It's a living document. It needs to be updated on a regular basis with the changing times. The last time it was updated was 2016. And I'd like to welcome the new council, blend with the old council, the two council members, and take a look at this and see what's realistic. In looking through it, I see an awful lot of fairy dust that needs to be sorted out. What's realistic for this community and what isn't? Each community is different. Circumstances are different, and we need to move on.
What specifically is going to be the focus of Clinton moving forward this? In the next four years, what do you hope to see?
Well, I'd like to see more economic development, controlled growth. We don't want to see a spreading all around the community. We have Lot 19 that has been on the books for a good 20 years. And that should be brought to fruition. Working with the high bar and with whispering pines in the area, I think we can move forward with this. There was a few hiccups along the way, namely with CN because of the railway crossings. Of course, there's always outside interferences that throw a challenge to it, but I think we can make it work.
All right, now, a few of our guests are reasons for being in the community as the news channel here is we've heard from the community and some of the, I guess, some of the concerns from community was aging infrastructure in our rural communities, housing costs, and then also transparency from mayor and council in different rural communities. When you look at those top subjects, for example, housing, how do you see your community growing? For me, you know, being a young person in a rural community, I want to stay here and plant roots. But some of the challenges are, you know, these older infrastructures with these high prices. It's a little hard, you know, for us to plant some roots here with those big hurdles.
Absolutely, yeah. There's always room for growth. Typical with these older communities like this, we have older housing. And there isn't a whole lot of room to build new housing. We've got one lot, Lot 9, which probably holds about 20 to 30 lots. There again, it's an economic time. What are the interest rates? What are the job opportunities? There's a lot of things to mesh together to make this move forward. The village, there aren't that many empty lots in town that could be developed. There's maybe three or four, but they're prime pieces of property, and the owners want to sit on them.
Yeah, I think that's definitely a challenge is having having a voice in rural communities when many of the decision-makers are seniors. I'm just wondering, how do you see youth having more of an input in community matters?
Well, I think with these changing times, a lot of the youth are creating their own businesses, their home-based businesses, their entrepreneurship. Gone are the days where somebody would come in and work at the gas station to gain experience or work as a waitress or a waiter in the local restaurants. Those kind of entry-level jobs are going by the wayside. Not taken away from the local businesses. I mean, they're always going to be that kind of thing. But I think with the youth today being more energetic, more in touch with things, better education, I think they can do quite well on their own with their entrepreneur's ideas.
I think too, one of our biggest challenges living rurally is because so many of us are online, you know, internet quality is really important. Opportunities to be able to work online. Technology is changing the entire world, and that also means that rural communities have to adapt with that. How can rural communities start getting into the high-tech world with some of our internet challenges? It's not going away.
No, no, it isn't going away. It certainly is a very challenging thing when you bring bigger companies into the mix of things and you try to work out with them. Fiber optic, I believe, went through town here about 20-some-odd years ago, and no connection has been made. I understand Ashcroft has had fiber optic for the last 15 years, and it's never really been brought to the homes. There was never really an appetite or a good argument for tell us or anybody else to move forward with this. They always said we had adequate services, but their measurement tools might be a little different than ours. So all we can do is just keep pushing and pushing and pushing.
And how can community support that too? I think, yeah, I guess, like I've said, it's not going away. We even see technology going into some of these like service-related industries to help with the lack of employees. We're even seeing robotic waitresses now. I mean, I can't see that coming just yet, but...
No, I can't see that for Clinton.
But still, I think that the point being is that if we start making this steps now, you know, my children and my children's children are going to be set up. But if we keep just delaying the process of being more high-tech, I feel like our towns are not going to be adequately set up.
That's true.
So how can we get communities to support this growing world?
I think all these communities kind of need to band together and go to the government and shake the doors and make them accountable, bring us up the line. This isn't the lower mainland, right? Obviously, they don't have a business case in a lot of things, but...
I believe Brad Viss was supposed to be working on some of that technology, some of those technology arguments. So I'll be sure to check in with him and seeing where is he at? All right, so just as we wrap things up here, what would you like to tell the community members that are watching about you moving back into politics and sitting as the mayor these next four years?
Well, I would say a lot of changes has happened since I was here last. The last few weeks, I've just been going through files. I've been going through the different meeting agendas, from the general meetings to the in-camera meetings. I've read an awful lot of stuff. I've researched quite a bit of what has been going on. And I'm finding just the same as before. Wheels of government turn ever so slowly, you know. And as I say, adjusting to these new changes with a good mix of council, I think people just need to be patient. And of course, my thing has always been to take a look at the books, see exactly where's the money going and what's coming in. Thirty-six and a half percent of our income is from taxation, so that leaves a lot of room to play with. But at this stage of the game, it's still a learning. It's still a learning curve. We're still trying to learn together to work as a team. I'm readjusting to the new staff, you know, and trying to fit in with them. Of course, we have good staff. Very confident with them. But be patient.
All right, be patient, Clinton. All right, thank you so much for your time. Of course, Valerie will be continuing to attend council, and we'd love to keep chatting with you and see how the community is moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Okay, bye-bye.
Here is our motions. A motion to adopt. Second.
Second, mayor.
All votes in favor. No allegations. We have question period. Anyone in the room?
Speak loudly, please.
We have question period? For those whose batteries and hearing aids are going down? None? Okay. Moving right along. Okay, we have an action item. Ashcroft and area community resources side of the Christmas hamper fund requesting for donations. Any discussion?
I'd be curious if this is something that we would normally do and what if we have done donations or supported it, what have we done?
Over the years, we, council, I can't remember if everybody's been here today.
Well, I can see we're using taxpayer money for this.
So that was always a question. So... But it comes to us every year. So whether we have a policy on the road or something, I just, I mean, it'll save time for action correspondence because it comes from our steering on policies on maybe something like that. If we, just for food for thought, I ask the same thing every year. It comes up every year.
So there's no action?
There is no action.
No action.
Well, I believe if it's supported through our own community somewhat with our own food bank and so forth, that's where it's getting its support. So it doesn't necessarily need to get from the bill. Because it is getting support.
If I may, is this the same one that the fire department was around in the reverse town? It's the same one. So your community's fire department is going to be doing that as well right now?
Okay. And we have correspondence, and that's for information only. And a reading file. So that's just post-op correspondence? CAO report nine, CFO, council laptops. It's down there?
After, for a four-year term, council always has or has this laptop or use iPads. And at the end of that term, you have the option to purchase them. I believe everybody purchased that. So obviously, everyone looked over the list of options that I sent out. So you just have to make a decision on which one you guys wanted to purchase for this four-year term.
I believe we discussed that and we were looking at the refurbished ones.
Yeah, the refurbished Lenovo, oh, sorry, nope. The refurbished Lenovo 2460. It had the same specs as the more expensive option. And in my experience, refurbished usually with a three-year warranty. Hope it is good to new.
And the second option is gone now.
Oh, perfect.
So that's out of the list. That's the one left. And these are from, you know, tablets.
So would you be taking the three-year warranty option as well? Forty-nine bucks. Were we able to see if we could get council park a ticket unit last week?
It was a dollar and eighty cents more than...
Oh...
I can't get in, I'll kick it in.
No.
Okay, so then that works.
Cool. I have a motion to purchase five.
I'll make a motion, mayor. Is a mayor allowed to make motions?
No, it should come from the council.
It should come from the council. I'll make a motion to council to approve the purchase of five new, it says laptops, but...
Electronic devices?
Electronic devices, for a amount of up to $4,000.
All votes in favor?
Any questions or concerns? Ask a question first, sir, if you don't want to, mayor.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Sir, just the $4,000, I didn't do the math quickly. You left room, we were room was out for warranties and cases or whatever else.
Yeah, because at that time, we didn't really have a set price at we do. So they're coming in at just over $2,000. So we got to hold that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
When will we see them?
Very soon.
That's for the mail.
We're so excited.
Yes and no.
There's no further discussion of those questions. All votes in favor? Motion's carried.
And VC Act of Transportation application. Boxed down or not?
Some of us agree with this. Our public works forum in here in the media hole meeting that we had kind of touched on this a little bit. And we was explaining that we had budgeted close to $100,000 for sidewalk replacement. We put it out there, we hadn't actually gotten anybody bid on the pump. And then before we put it out to tender a second time, our community development coordinator found a grant that would actually address sidewalk replacement and infrastructure. But it required money from the village of Clinton as part of that grant. It's sort of a us-pay, they-face sort of grant agreement. So it was decided to take the $100,000 that we budgeted and we were going to use anyway, put it towards this grant application, and then we'll get $230,000 worth of sidewalks for $100,000. So that's what the reporter, the request before you is to support that application in the council resolution as part of the grant application.
Could we have a motion for the recommendation?
I'll make a motion where the council support the application of the VC Act of Transportation Infrastructure Fund for the improvement of the pedestrian corridor.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the recommendation?
Question, so is that like an 80/20? Do you know what the split was on that?
Seventy thirty.
Seventy thirty?
So would it be enough to get it done?
Hopefully, we'll find out when we put it out to tender. That's sort of one of the issues of grants is that, you know, when you can sort of spitball on the size of what your project funding grant area is, but by the time, you know, quote certificate, we get for a month or two. And then grants take six months.
It also has a 20% contingency built into it. So there's like a 20%. It's going to cost more than we thought it was going to cushion.
Yes.
So it's not to the very penny, which is kind of good to know.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Got a question for several council partners?
So you mentioned the $100,000 that we had there. Is that because it was just too long? It wasn't, it was because there's no way to get that number, basically, or?
Or there's busy doing bigger projects.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, we sort of put it out there so, you know, give us like per meter cost on what it would cost to do. Because we didn't, he said we need, you know, three kilometers of sidewalk replaced. It was, you know, we need a bid to do, you know, this corridor area. So what's your cost on it, right? And I was just too, really too small of a job. Everybody was, we were lucky, we got dating done this year. We were struggling, you guys couldn't just do that.
So if I just finish my thought, so my question was that the $100,000, do we expect to have their order done? Or was it just a section, whether they could do one?
It's going to do from, what we expected to do with the $100,000 was basically one side of the highway.
Okay.
From Pecan up to the... So now we're going to get basically both sides of the highway.
So initially, initially, we thought that the $100,000 was going to get one side. But now we're up to $300,000, so that's more than double.
Oh, yeah, it's increased in six months. The price went up like 15%.
Yeah.
So every minute that ticks by, it's more expensive.
And every time you do like a land down or a crosswalk or, you know, an intersection or a bump adjustment, it was all increase the prices.
And this also has curbs involved in it, and the original $100,000 didn't have curbs.
Okay, cool.
So hopefully, with the grant, we should be able to go a little bit further, a lot further than we originally hoped.
We find a contractor willing to do the job.
So that is our next issue, is finding someone to do it.
It's always the issue.
And then staying within our budget that we end up coming up with.
We'll stay within the budget.
Oh, yeah, easy. We just need somebody to do it.
You may have to scale back.
We need the grant, we need the grant first, guys.
Yeah.
But the dollar amount is fixed. So if we only get, you know, 1,500 meters instead of 1,200, 1,200 instead of 1,500 lots is what we get. That's just what we get. The dollar amount is fixed. The linear run of sidewalk is a little more flexible.
Cool. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All votes in favor? Fire department report, that's just for information. We're getting a blue sheet of file. Just information only. And committees, we have the portfolio appointments. And up?
So this would be just the, basically a recommendation from the committee of the whole. So everybody met as a committee of the whole. We got three portfolios, and this was determined of it. So committee of the whole can't make motions or resolutions. So we'll bring forward the resolution as simple as adopt the portfolios as recommended by committee of the whole.
Okay. We have a motion to that effect?
I'll move to that.
Seconded? Okay. Discussion? Any questions? No, we're still reading.
Is it contingent on us to reach out to these organizations?
Some of them have already reached out to me. We'll get you open, but you're very good.
Any further discussion? Questions?
Just a comment on that, mayor. So on these, do we have, and I'm not sure if it falls in the training package, in your liaison and you're in these, what is your power as a council? What is your job as a council in these? And is something that, whether they discussed with you already? If they haven't already, maybe it should be discussed at some point?
We can certainly address that point forward. So like most of it is really just a liaison for information. Generally, you'll get a vote with the appointments.
If the only one place you have a vote is the TNRD board. TNRD board, I only get one vote based on your policy.
And what about the committee of force?
I believe you're not voting members, just as a, basically, council liaison.
Okay, always wondered that.
By the way, I was going to read that, just I don't have a vote. I'm just going to, I figured I was going to be there.
You represent council and then bring any information from that act of council, right?
There are any requests.
So again, that can be a purpose of the, you know, as the council reports that would form part of the agenda. What meetings did you attend? What did you learn from those meetings? Any action that's required from the council for those boards or appointments?
Well, I think any action that's required would not come in a formal process?
It should come from them. They, the attending council member is going to need a heads up or information of what's coming.
And now we'd go for all the committees, or more or less all the committees other than, what you were saying with the TNRD?
Yeah, we have a one vote.
You have the one vote.
What about interior health? Do we have a vote on that?
I guess, pretty much, it's like a more of an informational thing. You know, we welcome your comments, but we mean...
Yeah, that's like most things. Counselor Shapatsky, yeah?
Good. Good, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? I'll call the question. All votes in favor? Okay, the motion's carried. No report from bylaw? Okay, bylaw policies, the office closure policy.
Are you ready here, Dave?
It was a late item.
So have we finished, if I may ask, Mayor Stanky? Have we finished everything on here?
Except for the stuff you got highlighted.
Well, I did have one question, if I may do that before we go to this. With the bylaw officer, should we not get a report as a rule? Or is it a monthly thing?
A quarterly.
Quarterly? Quarterly?
So, and I will have him attend a meeting in the New Year. And he can, he'll come and bring everybody up to speed on what he's doing.
Okay, so a quarterly, every three months?
Yes.
I mean, as well, that goes with the animal control authorities.
Quarterly or as there's information?
As your wish.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that, you know, as things happen, a quarterly. Okay.
If there's something that requires action or council attention, it's going to wait till a quarterly. If there's an issue that needs to come to the Capitol, it's going to be for council. Others, just give us a quarterly report or not.
Okay, thank you.
Going back to the office closure policy. We have a recommendation from, I bet the council approves the holiday office closure policy. From, from, I got the council approves the holiday office closure policy. Is there someone to take our motion?
Second. Motion, the council approves the holiday office closure policy, policy number eight dash twenty twenty two dash zero one.
Okay, is there a second there? Discussion. Okay, um I was gonna ask here on item, on the policy here, four and five. Staff is required to use holiday and back ten, is there enough for them to do that, or?
My disclosure, historically important, it's, it's come to council every year that hasn't asked, so the. The point of the policy is just to sort of codify, but then you won't have to keep coming back every year to have this discussion. But staff typically, yeah, would have that time already put aside in, in the new year, you know, planning ahead from the. The beginning of the year that they need those, you know, three, four days, whatever set aside.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question, all votes in favor? Motion's passed. My council reports, they're quarterly?
I lost, I lost on our portfolios.
Yeah, just verbally.
And list of outstanding council previous action items. H forty five, there's nothing on it. So. Is that a quarterly thing too, or?
No, it's usually carried over from the business of the previous meeting.
Mayor? So sometimes I'll read council reports, actually my time all the time is usually verbal, so if I have any information, um, I'll get it in, it's not written on the agenda, so.
Well, just, just kinda give them a heads up, like a report or something, because they're, I guess the default setting is always none, 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 none.
Yeah, yeah, well, they actually use a verbal on it, and there's a report, and they'll put verbally beside it usually, so. That's usually how it's usually done in fact, so.
Is that the preferred way of doing it, or do you want it kind of different way? Better than any.
I guess I don't wanna make more work. I guess it'd be the preference of council.
So if I can make a comment on it, just one of the reasons, if you do a written one, and then um people can read it, and then if they have any questions. Then that gets brought up at question period, and this also makes it a lot faster, I was taught when I first done this, rather than sit in here talking, so. You can do a written one.
Personally, I prefer to see it written. I mean, if that has been your past practice.
Well, well, whichever, whichever comes, it's gonna, I guess the main thing is that it gets reported. So the whole idea is you go to me and you can pass it on to council, and I agreed, obviously it'd be best if you see before. And so you can read it, see on the agenda, so um, that's, most of people do that, I'm bad that way. But I'm just, I guess the point was, I did have a verbal on the report here, but I can wait for next.
Do you have some verbal?
Just on the pack.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, okay, that's not.
This is a training exercise.
So pack, basically, um they had their annual elections, they had to change over their directors and uh. Um so as is uh um. George Lawrence was the previous pack president, he, of course, he was elected as full trustee, so we can't hold that anymore, straight to step down. Um I think it went as uh Blake Bolster, you know, the pack president, um. Um I think Katie's the, I could be wrong, Katie McCullough is the um. Vice president and treasurer is still um the same and um. Trying to do it off the top of my head now.
Natasha.
Natasha is the secretary, yes, thank you.
Does Natasha have a last name?
Oh, yeah, it's her last name. Um of course, we have the staff, the council, um the pack had the auction, National Pack, it's Clip for Kids Auction, it's a night at the pack, and they had a. A stellar evening on Saturday night, so we'll hear more the numbers on Friday, next week, but it's, it's pretty exciting, so. That is that, thank you.
We don't need a motion to accept that report today?
Nope, I don't wanna go around seeking anyone else. Sammy's sitting on your receipts.
Uh just the, the committees in Bloom had their AGM and Susan Swan is now the chair. Um I believe Nancy Redco is treasurer and Iain Cleland is um secretary. And there'll be something coming, I'm gonna read.
I'm sorry, who was the, Susan Swan was chair?
Yeah, Nancy Redco.
So going back to uh councillor park um. Report there, so my question would be, when is it, when is the next meeting, number one, and then number two is. Would we be getting some sort of idea or report as to how that particular weekend went? I mean, so there is, there is some pretty big numbers there.
Yeah, so, so it's run by Clip for Kids, is a separate nonprofit organization. The reason for that was, if you don't know the history, it was that pack, of course, associated with the school, you can have, and of course, when you have a. The auctions, because it used to be the pack auction, there's alcohol involved, et cetera, et cetera, things that, of course, the school can dones. And you can't be associated with, and there's also, of course, marijuana legal bound, there was a sponsor from a marijuana company, so that cannot be. Had to have the arms length from it, so Clip for Kids was formed, so as a separate organization from pack, what they do is pretty well the same people. They, they're the ones that run it now, since their arms length, so just administration thing, right? And then um basically um they raised the money, they donated all goals to that. After costs are incurred, so there will be a, after all the um receipts are in. Et cetera, et cetera, costs, and probably takes, Jessica's the one doing that right now, and um they will uh probably, I would guess, probably, you know, a week, you'll know what they. But uh I mean, you know, we're numbers, probably forty, didn't we?
Yeah, some pretty big numbers.
Yeah, 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 so which would be the biggest one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is pretty amazing, right?
How much was the last, the last pack auction?
Probably twenty six, twenty seven. No, and every, every time you had it. So uh, yeah, big, big numbers.
Yeah, and they were, they didn't know which way it was gonna go. They didn't know which way it was gonna go, they thought, you make some money, it'd be great, and it'd get people out, but like I said, this was, I think, a very surprise. But you were there, you seen how. But I think that's your original question, I think within a week or week and a half, and I'll report that back.
Yeah, because I think that'd be interesting for us and, and, and the public to, to really dig in and find out what.
You know, I'd assume they probably read it in the area.
Yeah. Cool, cool.
Anybody have any questions to some, to councillor Barrage? With her communities in Bloom? Alright. Any other council reports? No? I guess we have no notice to proceed to in camera? So we'll just tap in the door.